All right, we're going to bring this meeting back to order. Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting aired live on our local cable television station, QACTV-7. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at qac.org/live or on our television channel, Breeze Line Channel 7 and High Definition Channel 507. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to qac.org-publiccomment. Citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@qac.org. Comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on this evening's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation, and by attending, you acknowledge that the session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign the information, or excuse me, the information sheet on the outside on the lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the commissioners' review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission Vice President, excuse me, Commission President Jim Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with no end, justice for all.
Please remain standing. We have a moment of silence. Queens kind of just lost one of our greats, and before I do the moment of silence, I just want to tell you a little about Charles Nesbit. So he was born in 1931. Coach Nesbit, as he was known, developed a love for athletics. After graduating from college in 1954, Coach Nesbit went to the United States Army, serving honorably for three years. Coach Nesbit began working for Queen Anne's County Public Schools in 1959. He led Queen Anne's County High School to the first ever Bayside Championship, and he started the indoor track program in 1979, and he continued to coach until 1995, well after he retired from teaching. Coach Nesbit passed away yesterday, so we just want to have a moment of silence for him.
All right, Commissioners, that brings us to today's agenda. So our agenda for tonight's meeting, October 24th, along with the regular session minutes and the sanitary commission minutes from the October 10th meeting, have all been circulated for review. Do we have any additions or corrections?
A motion to approve the agenda and minutes as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. We just held a closed session under the general provisions, Article 3305B3, to discuss land acquisition, and Article 3305B8, to discuss potential litigation. And I do believe there is one motion we want to cover.
I move to execute to authorize the county attorney to enter into the legal services agreement with Grant and Eisenhofer, PA, and further authorize staff to opt out of the proposed class action settlement with both 3M and EJ Dupont Demores.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to the first press and public comment period. So we appreciate all citizens for taking the time to express views to the county commissioners. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments longer than three minutes may be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, your address, and your topic of interest, and in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner.
First on the list is Teresa Erhart.
Greetings, Commissioners and staff. Tonight, I would like to voice my concerns once again regarding the proposed landfill. I may sound like an emotional speaker, but I have unveiled many facts and many errors that should stop this process now. And I've asked myself repeatedly that if the landfill was coming within 1,500 feet of one of your homes, probably rules, laws, and regulations have changed since the purchase of the property in 91. And why are they being... Your 2014 Waste Management Plan, as we have well known, contains the constraint regulations of no homes less than 1,500 feet and no potable wells less than 2,500 feet from the border of the landfill. All of our lots in our subdivision of Shrewsbury Farm Lane is in that less than category. So I'm going to hold up three plotted maps. These are all signed by necessary governmental entities showing the final approval of the 24 residential lots for our subdivision. The dates start February 11, 2005, February, um... I've lost my place. To June 2006. And you will note here that on these, where we see my green circle, the proposed landfill is already mentioned on the lot, right next to our subdivision, but was ignored. Um, it seems like something questionable has taken place, and I don't know what it is. All the agencies approved this subdivision going in. I also want to know how much tax money has been spent. Almost a half a million dollars was approved at the MAS Board meeting September 28th of this year. Almost a half a million to contract for the Phase 2 report, okay? Yet your December 13, 2022 notes, your meeting notes, say that the MDE, check your notes, received the Phase 2 geology and hydrology report for the quote "proposed landfill." So is this report being done twice? I don't know. I plead to stop wasting money on the illegal location and put those funds into a new location that will adhere to your regulations. So we are in the process of establishing a Concerned Citizens Committee with property owners from both within our subdivision and outside. We would like to meet with a group of county commissioners in the very near future to try to solve the problem. Clearly, there's only one solution, and that is to find a new site that will not negatively impact the citizens of your county and adheres to the laws that you have made. Thank you very much. And I will leave my notes, pictures, drawings, so that you can review, because it's always evidential. Thank you.
Anna, Anna, I don't want to mess up your last name. What's your last name?
Queller.
Queller, thank you.
My name is Anna Queller. I live at 129 Gray's Pond Lane. My topic tonight is Midshore 3. The county in its 2022 Comprehensive Plan, pages 3-21, recommends regarding the midshore landfill strategy. The county will continue to assess the feasibility of the siting of Phase 3. The 2022 Comprehensive Plan was an update to the county's 2010 Comprehensive Plan, which states on page 8-11, "The following criteria should be used when conducting a feasibility study for locating the Midshore Regional Solid Waste Facility 3 within Queen Anne's County. Compliance with state and federal permitting requirements. Detailed procedures for locating a new facility and Level 1, 2, and 3 screening as outlined in the Queen Anne's County Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan 2004 to 2014. Meet environmental objectives, technical objectives, and social and public policy objectives. Protection of water resources and sensitive areas. Groundwater aquifer protection. Groundwater and well setbacks. Floodway and floodplain protection and setbacks. And distance from surface waters, especially Tier 2 waterways. Distance from existing residential development. Distance from existing community facilities such as schools and similar uses. Distance from county and town planning areas and minimal impact on towns with respect to travel access routes. Impact on transportation systems. Distance from parks and natural areas and size of facility to meet disposal and transfer needs of current population and future population." Regarding the Level 1, 2, and 3 screening procedures, the county's 2015 to 2025 Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan is identical to that of the 2004 to 2014 plan that the criteria in the Comprehensive Plan refer to. Page 70 of the 2015-2025 Solid Waste Plan states, "First level screening identifies all inherent constraints which would not allow a solid waste management site at a particular location due to conditions that render the site unacceptable for future investigation. First level screening criteria shall include all of the constraints identified below in Table 4-1." Shall include. Number 5 in Table 4-1 states, "New solid waste disposal facility shall be horizontally located a minimum of 1,500 feet from the nearest home, 25 feet from a potable water supply that is used for human consumption. There are numerous residential homes, all which use well water, that are less than 25 feet from the Harper Road site property lines. Therefore, the Harper Road site is rendered unacceptable for further investigation according to the county's own site selection process for Midshore 3 Regional Solid Waste Facility." I am requesting that you, the county commissioners, review this primary source material respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. David Erhart.
David Erhart. I live in the Shrewsbury Farm subdivision. Gentlemen, ma'am. In following up with Anna, the Queen Anne's County Land Development Use and Development Code Title 18, adopted in January 2004, it states that there is currently, does not permit a solid waste disposal in any zoning in Queen Anne's. Title 18 does allow an exemption for public use services, but that exemption requires four steps. First one being county staff, solid waste advisory committee, conduct a joint planning session, and rank all sites that are available for further analysis. I would like to see that list. County staff, step two, county staff will conduct an open public meeting participation to allow community input into this. The county commissioners and the solid waste advisory committee shall oversee and arrange this meeting. I would like to know if this meeting was held. The final site selection, step three, will be made by the county commissioners based on the overall evaluation outlined herein with the recommendations of the Planning Commission, solid waste advisory, and public opinion. This waiver is spelled out very specifically in Queen Anne Land Use Development Code Title 18, 18-1-TAC-15 Public Services. If the planning director receives the written consent of the county administrator, after the planning director, county administrator, planning commission have all examined reasonable alternatives and have made a written determination that no reasonable alternative exists, the public use waiver may be used. I would like to see this waiver. I have not been able to find it. I have submitted a public information request using your forms to get that waiver. I would like to see it. If it cannot be produced, I do not see how we can proceed with this. Thank you.
Ms. Schaefer.
Pull it down.
I think I've got it.
There you go.
Yes, you hear me? Okay. My name is Eileen Schaefer, and I live also in the Shrewsbury Farm community. My husband and I built our retirement home there in 2022. My home and my well is less than 2,500 feet from the proposed solid waste landfill in Queen Anne's County. According to the documents, this landfill has been in the works as a three-county and then a four-county cooperative venture since the 1990s and early 2000s. Shrewsbury Farm, as a community, was established by Cal Gray in 2005 and '06 and on, as you can see, well after the conversations and plans were moving forward for this landfill. Just so you are aware, the value of the homes in Shrewsbury Farm surpassed the average home in Queen Anne's County by about 40 or 50%. So I must ask myself, why in the world would the county approve the community after it had already set the plans in motion to put a 200-foot-tall landfill right next to it? On top of that, it was a planned community, set up to be one of the more expensive communities in the area. Why would this community be approved? I can only come up with two answers. Either the left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing, which I can understand, that sort of thing kind of happens, happens in lots of organizations, happens in my house. Or the managers of this county, these county commissioners right here, just don't care. But since I'm sure you are all thinking and caring persons, I'm quite sure the reality is number one. Not quite thinking it through when the approval was given to the community, that, to this community, that would be less than 2,500 feet from a 200-foot trash pile, thus trashing some of the nicest homes in Queen Anne's County, not to mention Claiborne Fields, not to mention Northbrook, not to mention many communities around it. So my final thought is mistakes happen. Please reconsider and plan to move this trash heap location.
Thank you.
Bill Kyle.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's good to be with you. First thing I want to acknowledge is the height. That's what really, there's two things, height and smell is what's going to bug me the most about this. I live at Shrewsbury Farm Lane. My name's Bill Kyle. When you talk about a 250-foot mound of trash over 100 acres, or approximately 100 acres tall, you'll be able to sit here from the rooftop of this building and be able to see that mound three miles away where that trash site is. So just if that's what you want to see from your city hall, or when you're out here having your markets and people are selling their produce and they get that width of smells here in Centerville, you'll start hearing complaints, and somebody's going to have to do something because that, that thing over a 10-year period, that dump will get higher and higher and higher. And just to put that in perspective, you drive across the Chesapeake Bay Bridge over to Annapolis, and on my car dashboard, it tells me when I'm at sea level, when I hit Stevensville, when I get to the top and I'm driving across, now this is where you're driving, it's 212 feet. So if you want to go another 30-some-odd feet above that, you'll be able to see that landfill from right here, and it'll be huge. So I hope... My father was 60 years old when I was born, and he taught me as an old man, he said, "Do things right." And that's what we're asking you to do, is do things right by doing the right things. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Stevens.
Good evening, Commissioners. Joseph Stevens, Attorney in Centerville. As you know, I represent Jamal at Kenton Arrows LLC, and I want to thank you all for the hearing you had back in July, where you deferred any action on Amendment 2302, which changed some of the mixed-use requirements in the Kenton Arrows are proposed to. You had expressed some concern at that, at that meeting about the 5% commercial being too low, an amount of commercial as part of a mixed-use in the Kenton Arrows, and as a result of that, Douglas Development, Jamal, went back, looked at their numbers, and looked to see what they can do. And I sent a letter to you on the 26th of September suggesting and requesting that you look at and perhaps amend the ordinance, the pending ordinance, or the proposed ordinance, to increase the amount of commercial up to 10%. To put that all in context, Jamal's Kenton Arrows in 2019 received concept plan approval from the Planning Commission for about 100,000 square feet of commercial space with 396 apartments above it. All right? That, they weren't able to do that, and Paul Milstein, who's here today, can talk about that, but essentially, that development didn't move forward. What's being proposed in this amendment would be much less than that, and it's being proposed as a density bonus. So the Planning Commission has discretion, and you all do when it gets back to you for sewer allocation, to review those plans and to see if it's appropriate to approve such a plan. So we've put forth a 10% amount for commercial, and, and Paul's going to talk about going as high as 12%. What that would mean numbers-wise is almost 50,000 or 46,000 square feet of commercial space on the site, and it would drop the residential amount allowed under this density bonus to around 300, because when you add more commercial, it eats up land that you'd calculate your residential on. Paul will talk about it. Douglas believes that this is a proposal they can move forward with. To put in context, Mears Marina was approved, final site plan sewer and water allocation for 211 units. They never built it because it was purchased by Safe Harbor, and they went in a completely different direction that site plans avoid. Also, this property received growth allocation back in 1989 because it was pre-mapped, because it was predeveloped during the critical area provision. So you're using growth allocation on this property, and, and it needs to be redeveloped. Everybody recognizes that. Douglas has been willing to work with the county on a proposal that they can make work, that they can make financially feasible, and they want to continue to move forward with all of you. And I'll just leave you with this one note. On the 14th of February 2019 was when the Planning Commission approved that concept plan I referred to. If you want to look at that meeting, it's really interesting and instrumental. It really was very well-received, a lot of tough questions, no opposition, and so take a look at that. I think it might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Milstein.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thanks for the opportunity to see you again. So I just want to reiterate what Joe has laid out with all the facts and figures and numbers that, we look forward to coming before you again as soon as possible, to see if we can move this, continue to move this forward. You guys have been very flexible and very amenable over the years, as the Planning Commission has. It's been a bumpy ride with a lot of trials and tribulations, and I get that, that sometimes you just have to get to the sweet spot. The original project we had proposed required structured parking and several other things, and it was just too big and undoable, and the world's just changed dramatically. What we have before you now, and we are able now to go to 12%, and we've really just tweaked it, you know, through the conversations we've had and within the community as well, is a surface parked, stiff-built product with about 46,000 feet of commercial on both sides, so we'll be participating in the special tax district, no problem there. And we have, in the last year, successfully financed about eight residential projects in various areas, very similar to this. This is what's working today. This is doable. We're confident in it. We realize we still have a lot of work to do, and there's allocations and more designs and engineering, but we ask for the ability to keep moving forward because this is something we can get done, and if not this, I just don't, I don't know what we would be able to achieve. This is doable. It's been a long haul. We'd like to put it away finally and move this project forward. Thank you.
Ben Cooney.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff. My name is Ben Cooney. I'm the founder of Plastic Free QAC, and my address is 735 Oyster Cove Drive in Graysonville. Well, I'm here today to provide updates and a reminder that you have agreed to introduce a Bring Your Own Bag Ordinance. We know that you are very busy people and always have a lot on your plate, and we just don't want it to get buried in your to-do list. So we have now witnessed the ordinance passing in Centerville, and it is the 16th geographic location in Maryland to pass the ban, and really with very little opposition. So Plastic Free QAC have been invited to work with, very closely with, the town of Centerville in preparation for the implementation in January of '24. Their goal is to be proactive by, one, educating residents and businesses about the details of the ordinance, and, two, to distribute reusable bags that promote the Bring Your Own Bag campaign. We are all in agreement that getting rid of these plastic bags and replacing them with paper is not the answer. Rather, the focus will be on encouraging people to bring their own bags, including handy tips on how to remember them, because we all forget. Additionally, Plastic Free has fulfilled its obligation to purchase a portion of the city's bags specifically allowed for SNAP and WIC people. We made that promise, and we have followed up. We have been extremely impressed with how Centerville is preparing in advance for the upcoming rollout, and remain confident that they have set a positive and effective example for the rest of Queen Anne's County. I don't need to tell you about how bad plastic bags are for the environment. We see them all over the road. We see them hanging in trees, and you already know that less than 5% of plastic bags that get recycled, that a single-use plastic bag is used for the average of 12 minutes, and that it takes up to 1,000 years to decompose. What you may not realize is that an estimate that a one-cloth bag can replace 1,000 single-use plastic bags over a lifetime, over its lifetime. It's also estimated that the Eastern, which implemented their bag ban back in April of this year, saved the use of 1 million plastic bags the first month, just seven major stores surveyed. So we look forward to working with you and getting this ordinance passed in the rest of Queen Anne's County. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. You signed up to speak. Would anybody else like to speak at this time? You'll be the last one. Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Brad Dutton. I live at 136 Gray's Pond Lane in Centerville. I'm here to speak about the solid waste facility. Just been studying up a little bit about the Queen Anne's County org chart here, and I see voters at the top, I see you guys, and you oversee like some buckets of departments here. Under the Land Use and Environment section, there's two departments, the Department of Planning and Zoning, and the Department of Public Works. And on October 17, 2022, the directors of those two departments sent a letter to MDE with you guys CC'd on it, our attorneys CC'd on it, and it says the following. "The future siting of the Midshore Regional Waste Facility Phase 3 in Queen Anne's County at the end of Harper Road is consistent with the 2022 Queen Anne's County Comprehensive Plan as well as the 2015 to 2025 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. Specifically identified in the Solid Waste Management Plan, the county commissioners purchased the 124-acre farm at the end of Harper Road for future, for the future site of Phase 3. Therefore, the siting of this project is consistent with the county's long-range planning strategies to provide adequate community facilities." This has been shared with you earlier. I will share it again. Within the 10-year solid waste plan from 2015 to 2025, there is a first level of screening. The first level of screening says that, identifies all inherent constraints which would not allow a solid waste management at a particular location due to the conditions that render the site unacceptable for further investigation. First level screening criteria, a new solid waste disposal facility shall be located horizontally a minimum of 1,500 feet from the nearest home, it does not, or institutional building, and 2,500 feet from a potable water supply or wellhead that is used for human or animal consumption. It does not. This letter went to MDE saying it does. So I know this is going to take time. I know it's going to take time to find a new facility. You told us to be patient, and we are, but at the same time, this letter needs to be rescinded, it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close press and public comment.
You want his address? No, I didn't catch it. It was reported. All right, Commissioners, we can move into our presentations this evening. First up, return to tab number six, item three. We have Heather Teneli, our Director of Economic Tourism and Development. She has Proclamation 23-51 for the 120th anniversary for the Freel Lumber Company. She has Proclamation 23-51 for the 120th anniversary for the Freel Lumber Company. Got a few guests here. Can you introduce your guests? Yeah, this is great.
This is the Freel family that's coming up. They just celebrated their 120th year in business. They have both the cannery and Freel's lumber. And so this week is Economic Development Week. And I couldn't think of a better way to celebrate that by celebrating a family that have a long tradition of employing our residents and a commitment to our community.
I got to say, they don't look anywhere near 120.
No.
Have a seat.
Have a seat. Yeah, have a seat.
Oh, sit down. We got four chairs there.
Jay Freel, I think most of you.
Hi, I'm Gina Freel.
Jay's wife.
I'm Sam Freel.
I am Bob Freel.
Very good. I was in there today in order of two doors, so.
Thank you.
So your grandfather, your great-grandfather?
My grandfather.
Wow.
So Sam is the fifth generation to start in the business.
Very good. Well, I've got a proclamation, and I'm going to read the proclamation. Proclamation 23-51. Whereas Freel Lumber Company of Queenstown, Maryland, a family-owned company, is celebrating 120 years of business, the company which operates Freel Lumber and SEW Freel's Canning House is owned and operated by five generations of the Freel family. And whereas in 1903 Samuel Edward Whiting Freel became Freel Lumber as a lumber mill operating several sawmills in the area manufacturing primarily construction lumber, railroad ties, and veneer products such as fruit baskets, the company began canning tomatoes in 1912 at the Queenstown Cannery. And whereas Freel Lumber Company continued to grow its footprint in Queen Anne's County by adding additional warehouse facilities and a kitchen and bath showroom. SEW Freel is the largest private label manufacturer of sweet corn in the country and the only remaining cannery on the eastern shore of Maryland. I did not know that. That is pretty, that's pretty cool. Whereas most recently, Freel's is one of Queen Anne's County's larger employers, providing employment for an estimated 250 employees, most of which are county residents. That's another kudos. Whereas Queen Anne's County values and appreciates the significant contributions to our community made by the Freel family and its employees. Now, therefore, the Queen Anne's County Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize Freel Lumber Company, SEW Freel's, its employees, and the Freel family for their commitment and contribution to Queen Anne's County economy and to congratulate Freel Lumber Company on its 120th anniversary. Congratulations.
So just to put you on the spot, what do you attribute the success of the business over the years, or over the generations?
I mean, just learning from those who came before us primarily. They taught us pretty well how to be, run a conservative business and keep moving forward with small steps instead of giant leaps.
So you, being the youngest?
Yeah, I got two younger brothers.
You got two younger brothers, okay. So any ideas that you have moving forward that you might want to change the way you guys are going to do the operation? Or?
Really on the spot, Phil.
Robots.
Are you looking at doing things differently, or?
Well, I think the way that things have worked over the past 120 years has kind of gotten us to where we are today. And I mean, obviously looking to keep growing and moving forward. But right now, kind of me and my brothers are learning from the generations that have come before us. My grandfather, my uncle, my father, in any way we can.
Probably the answer you wanted to hear.
That's a good one.
Softball, Phil.
Very good. I hope that helps.
Picture, absolutely. We don't get many pictures with 120-year-old companies, so.
Scoot in like you're family.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, young man.
Congratulations.
Future success.
Keep it fucking in.
That's awesome.
We got a little rivalry.
Good stuff. Good stuff. Yeah, great stuff. All right, for some more good news and good stuff, we have Director Steve Chanley, the Director of Parks and Recreation. He's going to give us our Parks and Recreation update for this quarter. So Steve, come on up, and he has a presentation up on the screen. And it's also in your book under tab six, item four. I'm in number four.
Thank you. So last time we met was back in February. So there's a lot, but I've condensed it down into a short period of time, so.
All right.
I decided to do a little different. Instead of having a ton of bullet points, I've put up a checklist of some pictures of projects that have taken place. So the two pictures on the left-hand side are the new artificial turf fields up at Bat's Neck and Churchill Park. In the top right-hand corner, we're beginning to work on the War of 1812 Memorial. We're still trying to get some information from the National Park Service to redo all the interpretive signs there. That's a project that is slowly moving forward. Down in the bottom left-hand side, you see a picture of a biker. We're working on our pedestrian.
A new trail?
It could be. We're working on our pedestrian and bicycle master plan. As a matter of fact, on Thursday night at the Vincent Building, there's an open house for that master plan. So the community is invited to come out to that program. It's from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. In the middle, you see this is Mowbray Park. It's a pickleball tournament that we had. We had 189 registered participants in that program, ran over the weekend. It was a great event. The bottom right-hand picture is one of our newest opioid trails. That's at Route 18 Park. It's a small section of about 80 feet or so. The purple trail denotes, you know, QAC goes purple. We have purple flowering trees and some purple flowers that are in there as well. We're also planning to complete one up at Churchill as well. One of our other projects in the top right, that was the condition of the Bat's Neck outdoor skate rink. Down below that is the new pavement that is. The picture to the right is a rendering of what it will look like. It's not going to be green, but we have that project. We've got new fencing on there. We've got new pavement. We've got striping on there. In fact, the striping is kind of like a grayish-white, so it kind of gives that appearance of ice.
So Steve, real quick, the striping that's on there is for what?
It'll be for hockey.
Hockey, okay.
But you can.
Do you do box lacrosse on it?
I'm sorry?
Could you do box lacrosse on it?
You can. You can. As a matter of fact, in about a week and a half, we have a company coming from Minnesota to put up the boards around the facility. So in a week and a half, that project's going to be done. And we have been in communication with those folks that have interested. Right here is a quick listing. I'm not sure if you recall, but at the beginning of the fiscal year, I came to you with about seven or eight projects. And those are the first couple ones there, basketball court renovations, pickleball, footsall court, basketball court, white, I'm sorry, dog park. All those projects are going to be done within the next two weeks. And then below that, just came to you in August. All of those should be done in just about two weeks as well. So, you know, we've really hit the ground running this past fiscal year. We've got a lot of projects that have taken place and are getting completed. Nice to be able to show that. As far as recreation, we've done a variety of different events this year. Top left-hand side is, that's actually the course of the 5K and 10K out at Conquest. And we did that in conjunction with the Corsica River Fall Festival. Good event. Weather didn't always cooperate the entire day, but the intent was there to get folks out to, you know, understand the importance of the river. We also have the picture of Mata Peak. We've got the clubhouse. We did some concerts out there. We've had the Fourth of July down at, actually, Jamal's property and the Chesapeake Visitor Center. And then down in the middle, we did some movies in the park. And that particular one was up in Southlersville. And again, we've got summer camp picture there. We're doing some pickleball classes, and we ran a baseball tournament for kids 11, 12, and 13 years old this past summer. Here is a list of just some of the programs that are coming up. You can see we've got a little, we've got some, a trip to New York. We've got some soccer, basketball. So we've got a lot to offer that we're looking to put out there. And all those programs are getting ready to start in the next couple of weeks. Park ranger programs. Park rangers have been doing a lot. You know, usually, I would say, two years ago, people just thought that the park rangers were there just to kind of write tickets and pick up trash. Well, we've incorporated them into doing some programs. And they've done a couple of guided hikes for the public. We've utilized Conquest, utilized Terrapin, Mowbray. So again, we're trying to make them a well-rounded program. We've got them involved in some classes, Delmarva Woodland steward programs. So we're getting them out there to do a little bit more and be visible.
Steve, real quick, what's the hunter's moonwalk at Terrapin?
Hunter's moonwalk is one of the many different full moons that are out. Each, from what I understand, I don't know it intently, but.
About hunting by the moonlight, are you?
I'm not. But each full moon has a specific type of name, so I think that is the appropriate name of that particular one. And then they're going to go ahead and be able to give some more information. I'll come up with a. I'll invite you to the next. Public findings, as always, is doing extremely well, submitting grant applications to Maryland DNR. We've got Kent Nanners Landing, Bulkhead. We've got Muddy Creek. We've got Price Creek dredging. We're still working with the marinas and collecting fees for those as they renew their rental agreements with us. Thompson Creek, as Commissioner Corcorino knows, we've been meeting with him, and he's been a big help with us, meeting with him. We also are having them attend a master naturalist program, which is about an eight-month program. They go once a month. And again, they are able to, you know, better interpret the natural environment and be able to, you know, translate that to citizens. Bridge Airport, if anybody's been on the bridge or going down Route 8, you can see that that project is almost complete, the runway project. They are anticipating on being done, if I'm not mistaken, the first week in November. So they're doing well. DPW has done a lot of work with them as far as some work on their commercial hangars, doing some renovations in there, some landscaping. We've assisted with some of the help in the office as well as minor improvements. Let's see. There's a lot to go with it. And here's a couple of pictures that really just kind of show the status of the runway picture. And these pictures were taken, I would say, probably about three weeks ago. So a lot has even changed in that timeframe, so. Been running. The last thing I have is Blue Heron Golf Course. They did a project where they redid their greens. You can see the before and after, I'm sorry, the fairways. And you can see the before and after of those two projects. And now they are also finishing up a project of completing a new golf cart path on the front nine. So now they will have complete golf cart path throughout the golf course. And they've been busy as anything. In fact, that project for the carts was supposed to be done, I would say, probably about a month and a half ago. The business was so good, they didn't want to update it. They delayed it up until this week. But there's a lot more that's going on, so.
The runway is supposed to have a ribbon cutting Saturday morning at 8?
Yeah, it's, one of the central folks are, I can't remember the name of.
Port Pilot?
Yeah. They're inviting folks back so they can cut the ribbon to reopen their facility to the public as well.
Their facility, not the runway?
Well, their facility, but they utilize the runway. So they've kind of tossed that name into making a.
Okay, but no planes can land on the runway yet?
I haven't talked to Linda about that. I don't think, you know, Linda will have that specific information as when it is open and ready for planes to begin to take off and all that.
I think there's a misunderstanding. I think some folks think that runway is going to be open on Friday, and people can, planes can start landing on it this weekend coming up.
I'll get clarification.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Again, I know that ribbon cutting, it's a little bit deceiving. It looks as though one that the county's doing. Talking back there, their clientele to their business.
Okay. We'll have to keep the Commissioner's jet at Easton until, then we'll move it back to Ken Island.
Mr. Director, can we talk about Queenstown to Centerville Trail pieces of it? Not now. Not now, but we'll talk about.
Yes, that cannot, that's also part of the Kimley Horn Study that will be, have the open house this Thursday. So it talks about all trails and all connections that are going on. We also have, we're getting ready to break ground.
Between the two towns, or most of them?
We don't have specifics. We know that that's a, you know, a preferred path, and obviously.
This town golf has agreed to allow us to, that's a big deal.
We've talked with the town of Queenstown, and they had told us that probably about a year ago that the golf course was open to allowing a trail through.
Can't make it, can you?
Crumpton Landing?
I'm sorry?
Crumpton Landing?
Crumpton Landing. We just got the engineered plans in yesterday, and we're supposed to meet with them Friday morning, along with Deep Creek Landing as well. So they're moving forward with that.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Very well done. Our next presentation is from Heather Tenelli, Director of Economic and Tourism Development. And she's got her economic and tourism update. And we have the presentation up on the screen, and it also is in your book, item five, under tab six.
Hard to come after parks a wreck, so I'll try to do my best to be interesting because, you know, we're a lot of numbers and stats. But this week is Economic Development Week. Monday, we went and visited North County businesses and mid-county. Freel's was one of them, and it was really great. We had some of our Economic Development Commission members with us. And it's really fun to get out and about, and we learned a lot from those. But we thought it'd be a great idea to come in and give you an update on how things are going in economic and tourism development in the county. I won't go into reading our mission, but overall, we want to be a valued and respected resource to our businesses and the community members and our visitors. We continue to focus on the four pillars, and that's something somewhat new since I've been here as far as our focus, always economic development and always tourism. But, you know, adding Connie Dean to our staff, we now have a workforce component. And then we've also engaged in community development. Things that we've learned from our comp plan is the need in our North County area, which is where our larger municipal. our comp plan is the, the need for our North County area, which is where our larger municipalities are. So we've been doing some outreach there to see how we can help them in their economic development endeavors. So quick stats, how we gauge how we're doing in the county. We have a 1.5% unemployment rate. So that means, you know, we hardly have anybody that's looking for jobs. Of course they are, but then that means there's a lot of jobs to fill and there's nobody to take those jobs. So what every, everybody that we visit, every single business that we talked to yesterday, just yesterday alone, so workforce was their top issue. So having Connie on our team and marrying the high schools and the college and the parents and the students to the employers is, is a step in the right direction for sure. So I'm really thankful to have her as part of our team. Right now, our population's at 51,000. It's projected to grow a little over 2% over the five years. Our median income is very strong. It's at 99.6,000 per household. And, you know, very competitive. So I, I shared with you, I shared with you a while ago that we were ranked number one as far as GDP gross domestic product, but we were also the sixth fastest growing county in the state. So it was an article about the top six. We were the sixth. It was Howard, Charles, Calvert, and I can't remember the last one, but, so things seem to be certainly moving in the right direction. The next slides I have, I won't go into a lot of detail about them, but you can look at economic development and industries in several different ways to say what our top industries are. Some people look at gross domestic product, just the value of all the goods and services they produce. Some people look at job creation. Some people look at, you know, their total revenues. So I've provided a lot of different slides, but you'll see that wholesale trade is, is the top when you're looking at the value of goods and services produced. Manufacturing is right up there, construction, accommodations and food services. If you look at industry earnings, wholesale trades is up there again. And these are all, you know, 2020, end of 2022 numbers. Manufacturing's up there at the top. Government's always in there because that's a huge job creator here. Industry job growth, that, this, this slide's slightly different. It's what industries are growing and hiring the most. Manufacturing comes in second there, construction. So you see some commonalities there. And the largest industries for, for jobs is government. And that's not only our government. So we have a lot of people here that work in Annapolis and DC. So you would accumulate those as far as the types of jobs that we have here. Some other great stats that we love to share, our enterprise zone, which runs from the Bay Bridge up into where the emergency room is or right before it, we approved $6.8 million in new construction. We don't approve any construction, but the, the value of that construction with approvals of the enterprise zone and 10 new jobs in 2023. As you may be aware, and I'm sure you know, we have a new EDIF fund, which is now 1.2 million. We were a little under 200,000 before this fiscal cycle and we're really excited to, to get working on that. It's about 240,000 in workforce monies that are, be a part of that fund. This year alone, we've created 20 jobs through that fund with a capital investment of $38 million. So it's a pretty good return. Some of the deals that we're working on, I just, I love, again, love numbers. The pipelines, the projects that are in our pipeline, we have $53 million in projects that we are actively working on as a department. We had $17.9 million in deals closed and we're actively working to market the 13, there's more than 13, but actively marketing 13 commercial properties that are located throughout the county. And I have a list in here and I won't go into those, but they're varying sizes. Some of them are only an acre, some of them are up to 50 acres or more. But it's important for us to work together with planning and with the realtors and just trying to make sure that we market those properties for their best uses. A lot of them you'll find are along the 5301 corridor from the Bay Bridge up into Queenstown. And then there's a few in our North County, like Chesapeake Bay Business Park that has a lot of land. I always find these stats interesting. These are property sales, commercial property only that for years 21, 22, and year-to-date 23. And you can see with the values of those, in year-to-date 23, it was $45 million in properties sold to date. You can see the top three. So there's a lot more that are smaller. The Walgreens property in Chester, Chester sold, that doesn't mean the Walgreens itself, it means the property. Harrison's Yacht Yard sold for 5.2 and the Friendly's Retail Store, this is all public information, sold for 4.3. In 2022, we had the Hilton Transfer Ownership in Kenersley Marina. In 2021, the Bay Bridge Marina property purchased. And you can see Commercial, which is the dark blue, the lighter blue is mixed use, you know, commercial residential or, and then there's some slips there. The value of new construction, so this is different. This is looking at, based on permits that were applied for, the value of commercial construction. And you can see 2022 was at 25.7 million. It fluctuates every year depending on when projects get completed. So we don't take too much stock in the changes. We just hope to see growth over time. And FY23, we're at 41.4, so we've got a few months left. So we know 2023 is going to be a great year as far as that goes. When we went on those visits this week, we knew about some of the projects that are upcoming, but we didn't know dollar amounts. Just in the nine companies that we visited, there's 70 million in projects and most of those aren't even on my list here because we didn't know what the amounts were. So there, there's a lot of growth that's happening. We went to ICSC this year, which is not in Vegas. Thank goodness, it's in, well, I'd like to go to Vegas, but that's a little out of our range. This was in National Harbor in Prince George's County. And we developed this guide, not only to take there, but to also help our, our current retailer, vacant space and potential pad sites, help to market them. So we went to ICSC, met with a few retailers, few grocers. Just looking to spread the word about Queenance County, we have great, well, I guess it depends on how you look at it, we have great traffic counts, which are great for retailers and restaurants, but on the flip side, we won't talk about that. But we have, and great median incomes and high education levels. I mean, we have the bells and whistles. So we're, we're trying to do what we can to recruit and backfill empty retail. The Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund, you know, that was the 2.9 that we were awarded from the governor to Upper Shore Regional Council and then to each of the three counties that they represent. We have just about all of those MOUs signed and most of the projects are underway and have received some dispersments. The 4-H Park, as you, I'm sure remember, was our largest project and they've had several dispersments to date. So, or one done, one on the way. The schools have their career coaches in place and their career centers within the schools in place. So we're hoping as soon as they get their, their furniture, although they're operating without it, that we'll be able to have some sort of open house ribbon cutting. It's going to be great. But most of the projects are underway. Some of the events that we've had in the past and/or on the up and coming, our Toberfest was a success despite the rain. It rained that day, it was on October 7th, but still a pretty good turnout. We had that in downtown Stevensville promoting art. And we have a dance troupe that comes out there and actually dances in the streets every half an hour and loads of local artists and the businesses are open and it's a really great vibe. Tomorrow, as part of Economic Development Week, we're focusing on agriculture and technology paired together, protecting Maryland's agriculture through technologies as an opportunity. It's going to be at Chesapeake College, free of charge from 8:30 to 1 o'clock. And it's going to be really great. We have a mix of technology companies and a mix of farmers that are going to be there and various agricultural entrepreneurs. So we're excited about that. It's the first of its kind, actually. We did the Field to Table, which was back in October, focused on our micro ag entrepreneurs and those that have received grants. And we also try to focus on different months that feature various businesses. And in August, it was National Black Business Month and this is just one of the, we focused on a different business every week and this is just, you can see advertising that we did. If you were coming across the Bay Bridge, you probably saw the digital billboard that's right before the bridge heading east. And we, we had this in many places. We ran a crabs and crushes campaign and we worked with all of our restaurants that either had crushes, crabs, or both. And we made sure to market them through our social media and they helped spread the word on our, our campaign. And we had videos done and that sort of thing. And we had 1.6 million impressions. People looked at these videos and looked at these.
Thanks to that, thanks to this promotion?
Yes, but it's great.
The grapefruit crushes might put you now.
Yeah. It is great and it's great to build those partnerships with those businesses. And you can look and see the feeds and people are talking about, oh my goodness, where is this? I want to go. And that's my favorite restaurant, I've gone there for 20 years or. So it was really, it's a really great campaign that we hope to build on next year and further partner with our restaurant part, our restaurant businesses in order to, you know, generate if they're going to come, we want them to enjoy our, our local culinary crabs and crushes. We are working on our new visitor's guide this year. We're going to have an outdoor guide, a culinary guide, and a visitor's guide. They're going to be smaller in page number, so it's not going to be three huge guides. But we're looking to focus on the culinary experiences that we have in the county as well as the outdoor experiences. So we're really happy to get that going. We're hoping that those will be out by the end of January, early February. And the next thing I have is some tourism numbers. For FY23, which, you know, ends June 30th, hotel tax collected was $991,000. There was a 17% increase. Some of that had to do with the fact that we had more rooms, we have 120 rooms from the Hyatt come onboard. But overall, you know, most of our hotels realized an increase in that tax. Keeping, keeping in mind that sometimes that tax has, the increase in tax has to do with higher room rates, average daily rate versus occupancy, but they saw an increase in both. So that's 144,000 over FY22. So I would project that, you know, the following year, we should see over a million dollars, if not more. I had a goal of that for this year, but I was off a little bit. When I looked at July, we had a 25% increase over the prior year, again, largely due to Hyatt, July 2023. And I put on here, for every marketing dollar that we spend, there's a $31 return. Just quick on the events coming up, Bay Ridge One is November 12th. We had a call with them yesterday and they said they are at the 20,000 mark. So that's great, yeah. And there's still some time to sign up. They've had a lot of signups as of late. We participate and help with the Queenance County Watermen's Association. Basket Tree, which is, that tree lighting will be December 2nd. And they're going to have several, several trees. If you need a basket, we have them at our visitor's center in the Queenstown outlets. And then this year, meet a Maryland Economic Development Association, picks a different rural region to, to host their rural economic development event. And this year will be the Upper Shore Region. It's going to be held at Cecil College, but it's still a great opportunity for our region to be highlighted. And with that comes a P and C grant of $15,000 that'll share between the three Cecil Cat and Queenans. And we're looking to do a pitch competition with those funds. So very excited about that. We're currently working on, continuing to work on the ferry feasibility study, which is again, a study to determine the feasibility for a tourism-based passenger ferry that would run around the Chesapeake Bay. We are in the end of October now. They expect it to be preliminary, preliminary findings December 2023 with the full report out in January 2024. So there were several sites that each of the counties pitched. We pitched the Kent Narrows and Mata Peak, but the, the findings are still too early to determine, you know, whether those are feasible or not, but we're hopeful. And then the last thing I wanted to share is that we are working with several of our towns. As I mentioned, community development is important, especially when our municipalities have the infrastructure necessary for some of, some of our industrial development that could take place, or commercial development in general. You know, we meet with the town of Centerville on a regular basis. We met with the town of Queenstown last week and, and plan on bringing in some opportunities for sustainable communities and grants. And we continue to work with Southersville and hoping to start to work with Churchill as well. But overall, we're, we're hopping and enjoying economic development. Every day is economic development.
Hopping would be an understatement. That was a very comprehensive report. You, you folks have been busy. Busy.
Just as yet to come.
Well, kudos to you and your staff.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Madam Director. Commissioners, we have one more presentation this evening and that is from Mr. Eric Johnson, Executive Director, Center for the Military and Veteran Families, Operations Update. So Eric, if you want to come on up and introduce your guests and take it away.
Good evening, Commissioners. And we want to start by just introducing ourselves. I think you know most of us, but just in case I was already introduced, thank you. Mr. Mann?
Joe Kandeler, I'm the chairman.
Maggie Thomas, I'm writing the grants and helping with program development.
Thank you all. It's really hard to sit in this room and not feel overjoyed by being in this county when you get to listen to the Freel family and Steve Chanley and Heather Tenelli talk about such wonderful things. Queenance County really is the best place to be and I'm grateful for that. And I know everybody sitting at this table is. And it's additionally great if you're a veteran, if you're a member of the military or one of their families. So this evening, we have just a couple of slides. I know you guys have gone long, so we don't have a lot to brief. But we have raised a total of 150,000 plus to date. That has helped us open the center. You've heard about on Ken Island at Bay Bridge Marina. It's positioned us to have all of the successes that we're going to kind of run through our numbers year-to-date. We've had a total of three suicide saves, one as far away as South Carolina. The other two were residents of Ken Island. We've had now eight combat PTSD support groups. That includes the one that's happening while we're sitting in this room right now at the Stevensville Center. And that's where we've had two of the saves. We are starting our spouse and caregiver support group, which is something that's critically needed. That takes place this Thursday evening at 6:30 PM and it is Zoom-enabled. So we're, we're going to really start moving toward allowing our group attendees to participate virtually, especially as a group that, and when I go down to other parts of the eastern shore to brief legions and VFWs, we really want to be accessible to folks that may live as far away as the lower shore and even across the bridge. We've had three massage therapy sessions for veteran spouses. One of the veterans that was suicidal, his wife has been so stressed out and has had just no time to invest in herself. So one of the things we offer is three weeks of massage therapy, one hour each. And she had never even had a massage and was just overjoyed with tears. And we offer that in partnership with Massage by Just here in the county where we can send a veteran and they bill us basically for, for the amount. So all of our services remain free. We've had three holistic therapies provided directly to 20 veterans. So that includes breathing exercises to relax, deal with anxiety, depression, or symptoms like that. We've done, Maggie, tapping, what's the official name for that?
Tapping.
Anyway, we'll, we'll demonstrate it another time, but there's a method where you tap key places and I've done it now a couple times and it works. I thought it was the hokeyest thing in the world and I think most veterans, when they're presented this, are going to say, I'm not doing that. But we've, we've had a ton of veterans do it and they're all saying, I'm doing this now, it actually helps. I'm sitting in the car and I'm tapping these key places and it really helps to re-center them. We've had 525 veterans, military family members, caregivers, provided information. So that's healthcare information, claim support for the VA, legal, education, behavioral health, and then our support groups information. Our year-to-date impact continued. Six American legions have sent out our support group and other VAMS information to a total of 400-plus members. We've had eight "thank you for your service" veteran stories shared on QACTV. So we work in partnership with Fred McNeil to have a good pipeline of veterans that can be ready to do that. Jim Moran, I believe you were our first, and that was really good. So when I was asked to do it, I- So when I was asked to do it, I thought, I don't know if I can follow Jim Moran or any of these other veterans, but I'll do my best. So I just did mine. I think that's coming out soon. We've had 19 book club sessions, serving a total of 200-plus attendees, 40 weekly coffee meetups at Dunkin' Donuts. And I can't remember if I briefed this last time, but the only Dunkin' Donuts that is not owned by the group that owns the eastern shore Dunkin' Donuts is Kent Island. So that's the one exception. So we're still going to work with them, but it's a lot easier that we have a regional manager for the rest of the Dunkin' Donuts to say, we've got this model that's been working almost a year now, where every Monday at 11:00 AM, veterans come. The groups are now 15 to 20 in size, very diverse showing, all ages, gender, you name it. A lot of fighting over who's, you know, the best service. And I'm never going to win that argument for the Air Force, but that's okay. We're going to keep fighting. But we're encouraging the regional manager to help us launch this throughout the eastern shore. So eventually, and our objective is in the next two to three years, we could actually market that if you're a veteran and you live on the eastern shore of Maryland, go to a Dunkin' Donuts at 11:00 AM on a Monday, and there will be a group there to welcome you and some fellowship. Those groups are so critical. I can't place enough importance on them because those really are breeding ground to establish trust, support, and before long, a veteran that's been going for a couple of weeks will say, you know what? I've been having trouble with my claim. Does anybody know what I can do? And then we're able to kind of coax them into coming into the center, which is sort of a nice glide path. 33 referrals to partner agencies here locally and state agencies as well. 15 VA claim support clients. And then we now have 99 members of the Veteran Military Support Alliance. So those are just a taste of our successes to date. And then we wanted to just briefly talk to you about what's on the horizon, and I'll ask my partners in crime here to jump in whenever they would like. We're working to secure enough funding to open the center full-time. We know how important that is to you all. It's equally important to us. We're anticipating some imminent grant awards and some large donor gifts, about which we'll keep you posted. We had a meeting with the Fort Meade Alliance Foundation recently, Maggie and I, and we're going to go tour their Coon Center. If you've not heard about this, they have basically the equivalent of what we want to do at Fort Meade, and it is open to anybody in the state. You don't have to have, or no, you do have to have a military ID, I think, to get on. So that's one differential that's kind of critical. But we have a good partnership with them. There may be a funding opportunity. Buck Duncan from Midshore Community Foundation connected us. But they have some models. They're doing things to intervene with families that we want to borrow from. If we don't have to create something and start from scratch, we are all for it. We also met with Kim in Cradaville from Senator Carden's office about some congressionally-directed funding, having the same conversation with Congressman Andy Harris. And based on our desire, and they believe, they've said this in our briefings, they believe we have stumbled across the model program that's worthy of replication. So if in time, we, our goal first and foremost is, of course, to open the locally facing side of the center as soon as possible. And if it's by the end of this calendar year is my objective, if not sooner. And then once we have that, then I think it's really starting to move forward with the training center where folks could fly in from all over the nation, take a week-long course, get our business plan, and then through the congressionally-directed funding, potentially apply for grants, some seed money, $100,000 or whatever that amount is, to start their own center and to be able to operationalize "thank you for your service" in their communities. So those are some really great opportunities. We want to continue to invest in training opportunities with our future generation of military, our C cadets, our high school ROTC. We recently took a field trip to the Air Mobility Command Museum. We had over 20 cadets attend. And what was so fascinating, they got to take a bus ride to Dover Air Force Base where the museum is located, and then have that travel time back where they were able to talk with other veterans, have a little bit of mentorship. And it was so wonderful to me to see the faces of these young guys and gals as they walked through the museum. And three of them pulled me aside and said, I am just so excited about possible military service. And I asked everybody I talked to in the cadets, so are you in the cadets because you want to be? That's your path? And they're very frank. The kids, that generation, as you know, don't hold back. And all three of these guys said, you know, either my parents wanted me to do this because it looks good on a college application, or they made me. And that's not most of them. So if they're watching, I'm sure they're thinking, thanks for sharing this. But all three of them said, you know, I wasn't necessarily thinking about a military career. I'm enjoying what I'm doing, but I got to tell you, seeing the museum and interacting with veterans, and it's just, it's very helpful. And we're working with them on their mental health because those that have prior trauma have a tendency to select into military careers, law enforcement careers. I'm sure that doesn't come as a surprise. Obviously, if you've been traumatized, you've been in scenarios where you may not have had control over a situation. So joining an organization that has uniformity, rules, ethics, things like that. So when we know that that number of people disproportionately select into those career fields, and we know that 90% of veterans who serve in a military zone overseas, a military war zone, they are subjected to trauma. Doesn't mean 90% come back with PTSD, but 90% come back having been exposed to the very things that cause PTSD. So working with these youth to help them understand trauma-informed care, help them to understand what resources exist in their community. Now, if they do go into service and they are subjected to additional trauma, PTSD, they are better positioned to survive in their veteran timeframe. We're promoting events for National Veterans and Military Families Month. We sincerely appreciate the proclamation that you guys did a few weeks back. We're going to be promoting that. We are working with the legions, the VFWs, and other agencies to produce a calendar of events, not only for Veterans Day, for the entire month of November. So you'll be seeing that soon, and we're going to try to synchronize all of those different organizations so that it's a lot easier for folks like yourself that want to come to something to not have to feel competitive over three or four events that might be at the same time. We are going to do an open house for our center this year. Excuse me. There will be two, Wednesday, November 8th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Everybody watching from home or in the room is welcome to join us. And Sunday, November 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. In the spring, we're going to be launching Project Healing Waters, where we're going to take veterans out on boats from Bay Bridge Marina, maybe at the Narrows. There'd be a lot of opportunities for that, and we've test-driven that with a recent trip that we just took right by Libby's. And then we're going to be working with University of Maryland Shore Regional Health to ID veterans. This is huge. Walt Petrie, one of our board members, brought, I believe it was three of the Shore Regional Health Board members to take a tour of the center. Two of them happen to be veterans. And we had a tremendous conversation about the importance of you must know me to treat me. So if you're a veteran and the hospital system or healthcare organization that you get treatment from doesn't know that you're a veteran, your outcomes are more likely to be adverse under certain scenarios. And so in other states and other organizations, they ask the question at registration, have you served in the US military? If you answer yes, they never need to ask that question again. So it's a one-time thing. There's sort of an algorithm for if you answer no, because you're 17, you may answer yes in the future. But once you ask for that data, you can do a ton of population health metrics and interventions that really help veterans. And then there are certain medications, certain procedures that are highly recommended against if you're a veteran and on top of that, you have PTSD. So we already have a commitment from them. We want to get you in front of Ken Cozel, and let's talk about how we do that. The other thing that's nice is it positions healthcare organizations to negotiate higher rates for reimbursement through VA, through TRICARE, DOD. So that's the temptation, if you will, or the way to draw in the healthcare organizations because there's a little bit of money benefit involved, but it's also the right thing to do. And so that's kind of where we're headed. You guys want to say anything else?
My main focus is to raise enough money so that we're open full-time. Eric mentioned we have already mustered up 150,000. Our goal is by January, we should be open five days a week and in full service. And we have Maggie Thomas to thank. We have filed for seven grants so far, and there are more to come, about two or three a month. And those grants, as they are awarded, don't happen immediately. It takes 30, 60, 90 days to get the money, and that's what I'm working on now so that we can fulfill being open five days a week. And I thank Maggie Thomas, who has the expertise to write these grants, read them. And it doesn't happen overnight. It takes hours and hours of time and experience, which, if you look around in the industry, there are very few people who know how to do this and do it right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Anything you want to add?
No, I think you guys covered it. That was great.
We appreciate your continued support.
So what is it going to take to be open five days a week throughout the year? What's the operating expense?
Jim, what we're hoping to do is to have the allotment money to be open for 12 months, not for six, because we don't want to go out of business in the midst of being open. So our goal is to have in excess of 450,000.
Is that what you think you're operating, it's going to be every year 450,000?
No, it's going to be considerably more. This year, it'll be 450,000, be more like 1 million plus. If we get the, we have in place about a dozen volunteers who are veterans, who are going to man the post or the office, four or five hours a day, three or four days a week. And we're in the process. The next step is we have to investigate these people who are volunteering so that they have a clean record and no other background that would be harmful to our association. We're in the midst of doing that. And then we have to hire some full-time people who, in addition to the miracle of Eric and Maggie, we need to have some backup so that there are other professionals who have done this before and are paid. So that's why the budget will be a million plus.
So the center that I think I've shared with you all about, the Military Development and Information Center, or MAVRIC, we love our acronym, so I had to have one for the one up in Allentown, PA that I help work on. It's hospital-based. There was a glide path of literally $50,000 the first year we did anything, up to a budget of about 1.2 million dollars. So that doesn't happen overnight, doesn't even happen necessarily in a year. But the glide path that we have right now, we have a grant that we're hoping to get the information, the update on from Buck Duncan from Midshore Community Foundation for their annual cycle. Remind me, we asked for, it was two-something, correct? And if you divide by two for the year?
Yes, it was in the high twos.
So when I did the math, looking at our glide path of bringing on certain staff part-time, and then in January, increasing their hours, and then from there continuing, it's about 150,000. So the number Joe gave is the one that gives us the golden ticket of the board saying, oh, good, you have 12 months of money in the bank. I don't have to worry about that. We have commitments from several of the legions and other organizations where if we start looking at the fact that our fiscal year starts July 1st, just like you all, we have some commitments that fall right into that timeline where the 450, we've already raised a certain chunk of that. So when we come back again in a couple of months, I think what we would like to do is show you the budget, show you kind of how our glide path looks financially. And I know when we come back, we're going to be able to report that we've raised at least that amount, and we're now opening our doors full-time with a combination of volunteers and paid staff.
Very good.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
For the public, where is the open house?
It'll be at Bay Bridge Marina. And if you're paying attention at home, it's 301 Pier One Road, Suite 102. So it's on the same campus as Libby's Restaurant and has the best view of the bay that we could possibly have.
ROTC, how's that going in the high school?
That's an area that we're... So the counselors are supportive, but the path to sort of go from outside the school in is a process. And so we, we're getting ready to meet with Dr. Salins to specifically talk about this project so she could kind of help. That's, I didn't want to suggest that we're having a problem getting into the schools, but it obviously helps if you...
Can we get that up on the...
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. That would have been nice, wouldn't it? Oops.
No, no. Yeah, just leave that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner DuMino. So we...
Let us know if there's anything we can do.
I appreciate that. I think we're going to be fine. I work with Dr. Salins on the Queen Anne's County Council for Children and Youth, your council, and have a good relationship. So we've kind of talked peripherally about this, and I think now that we're bringing on some additional folks, we'll have the additional personnel to go into the schools to do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank each one of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioners, that concludes our presentations for this evening. We can move into, we have a few action items this evening. First, if you want to turn to tab number two, we have the Department of Public Works. Mr. Quimby has three action items for us this evening. The first one, under administration. Oh, and Warden Cook sends his apologies. He wanted to be here this evening, but he is out of town at a detention conference. But these first two items are associated with the new regional jail project. So again, tab two, item one, on pages one through two, we have a letter of intent. This is a Midshore Regional Detention Center, letter of intent to the Public Safety and Correction Services Division notifying them of our intention to commence the planning study and to construct a new mid-shore regional detention center with our neighboring counties of Kent and Caroline Counties on the former Eastern Pre-release site in Churchill on Flat Iron Square Road.
Move to execute the letter of support to investigate the feasibility of constructing a new mid-shore regional detention center with our neighboring counties of Caroline and Kent on the site of the former Eastern Pre-release unit located at 700 Flat Iron Square Road near Churchill.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Some moved. Does this mean we'll get the study back by March 2024? We have to have it in by then?
Both.
Excuse me?
Both. We will have, the study will be completed by then and has to be submitted by the state by then to stay in their funding cycle.
Cool. All right. Commissioner Moran's on item number two here. This is the Midshore Regional Detention Center, Part One and Part Two Programming Study Proposal from our design consultants. And this will kick off the design programming phase of the regional detention center at the Eastern Pre-release Unit location in Churchill. And the two counties have agreed to split this three ways with Queen Anne's. We will be taking the lead, and I anticipate getting, you know, letters associated with their commitment this week as well on this project.
Move to approve the Part One and Part Two Programming Study Proposal from Collamore Architects in the amount of $98,900 for the Midshore Regional Detention Center and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the proposal as well as to invoice Kent and Caroline County for one-third of the fee upon completion of the study.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion here? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? There now. So it would be nice if we could, you know, I mean, I know that the state normally pays, what, no more than 50%?
Or less than 50% because they don't pay for air conditioning in the cell blocks.
Right. So when they're paying 50% for a project, to build three jails at 50% per project is much greater than our regional. So it'd be nice for them to kick in maybe 70%.
Brought that up to your U.S. Shore delegation.
Oh, we're going to bring it up to the delegation.
We will certainly talk with our delegation about that. And I can say that, you know, we've, I want to hand it to Director Quimby and Warden Cook. We've had very productive meetings with our counterparts in Caroline and Kent County and the state of Maryland, and they're all very, in particular, the state, very excited about this initiative. It's one of the first initiatives, it is the first initiative like this in the state of Maryland, and we are looking forward to a successful collaboration on this project.
So Allen, do they handle it the same way they do with school construction on public works projects like this?
Honestly, don't help school constructions.
So like, finding Kent...
My understanding is it's 50% less the air conditioning component.
Okay, so that we don't get any special treatment like they do on the school side? Because that was the idea behind regionalizing schools in some cases with certain places because you could take advantage of better funding.
You know, it's definitely going to save the Queen Anne's County this regional, definitely going to save us at least 10 million.
Easily. Overall, I would say it's probably a double or triple that, but if you contend all the three counties combined.
Right. Yeah, I just wish they would rate it based on, because the theory behind that is Caroline doesn't have the kind of money to put into something, so would they put in something subpar because they could afford it? No, the state will kick in the rest to get it to what it would have to maintain standards. You know what I mean? So it's the same thing here. If they had to do a standalone, the state would have to kick in. And I think you got to make that argument that, hey, we're actually, as Queen Anne's, being better off, we're kind of pulling them along with us in a sense from the financial We're kind of pulling them along with us, in a sense, from the financial side. So, you guys are going to pay a lot less than the state, so give us a little bit more. I mean.
Well, I mean, I guess I look at it as if theirs costs thirty million, and the other one's thirty million, and ours would have cost forty million, and you take fifty percent of all that, and now this new site only costs us sixty-five million, you know? If we get that fifty percent that they were going to honor to all three.
Right, but no, that's what I'm saying. See, you can get a better argument even, because they would have given, say, Caroline seventy percent, right? So, now they're not giving them seventy percent because they're only going to give us fifty.
Either way, we're going to ask the question.
Oh, I know. I thoroughly agree, and I think we should beat on them. We're saving them a lot more money than it's going to cost them.
Are there, Mr. Director, are there grants for it? Things like HVAC and security systems?
This would be, the grant would be from the state for the forty-eight percent or whatever you want to call it.
It is the grant?
That is the grant.
That's just something they don't have in their grant process. And honestly, for a facility that size, you're probably talking a couple hundred thousand dollars, two, three, four hundred thousand maybe at the most.
Just for HVAC?
Yeah. Well, no, because you've got heating, you're only adding air conditioning. You've got to supply heating, but you're adding the air conditioning, so.
As I want you to cell blocks.
What's that?
Admin can have AC. They pay for that.
Right, the cell blocks, but that's typically just one of those ventilation, general ventilation systems that pumps cold air in there, so.
Very good.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. That's all we have for engineering and administration.
We have a motion and a second, but we didn't vote. Did we vote?
Yeah, we voted.
Oh, did we? Okay. You said yes. I did say yes? You said yes. Okay. I don't remember you calling for a vote.
It was unanimous, yes. Been a long meeting.
Convene as a sanitary?
Please.
Oh, I make a motion that we convene as a sanitary district?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Sanitary Board.
Yes, Phil.
Yes, okay.
All right, Commissioners. This is the Public Works Agreement Amendment Two for the Chester Haven Beach subdivision. They are requesting additional thirty-six months to initiate construction, and they've agreed to reduce the commitment for the allocation that they hold now from one hundred and eighty lots down to ninety lots.
Move to execute the PWA Amendment with Chester Haven Beach Partnership, which will grant the development additional thirty-six months to begin construction, as well as limit the ultimate development to no more than ninety lots.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. There you go.
One. All right, Commissioners, that's all we have for the Department of Public Works. We have one other action item this evening for the county commissioners. If you want to flip to tab three, it is item one on pages one through five, and this is a resident has submitted a request to rename the private road where they reside to Happy Camper Lane. So, thank you, Mr. Quimby.
Alan, you don't want to hear how this turned out, Happy Camper Lane?
Probably going to have to pick another sign, Alan.
Don't think this one will be stolen.
This was a private road and previously named Sportsman's Next Circle, and it's gone through the process through planning and zoning, DES, and Public Works. Staff has no objections to renaming the street, the road.
Where is this, Sportsman's?
It's, let me see here.
There's a map.
Yeah.
Okay, I move to approve the road name change from Sportsman's Next Circle to Happy Camper Lane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sportsman's.
Are you sure? No discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Very good.
Okay, Commissioners, that is all of the action items we have for the board this evening.
We'll write to roundtable.
Roundtable.
Who would like to go first? First or last?
I'm going to defer my time to Jim Moran.
Oh, damn.
I've got nothing.
I've got nothing.
Holy crap. Patrick?
You're going to talk about the Y?
No, you can't.
No. In your district, it's, that's you.
Well.
Active Aging Center.
I'll just say it was beyond.
Place is amazing.
It is. It's like a palace, and it was a wonderful ceremony, and Chris and Jim were there, and Jack, I'll let them talk about it.
Everybody was there.
Phil was there too.
Yeah, everybody.
Jack's there every day.
There every morning.
Every morning, waiting for the door to be unlocked.
I go there to cut the ribbon every morning.
Yeah. All right, well, just me? Well, like you said.
You know, I will say real quick, though, I appreciate the YMCA acknowledging past and present Commissioners with.
Naming the gym.
Naming the gym, where the pickleball courts and the basketball courts are.
What they named it?
Huh?
It's in honor of all past and present Commissioners.
Really? Nobody's changing it. I talked to.
And future, right?
Right, he's going to put in future.
When you need more money, you already got it covered.
I'll sign them again.
It works.
You done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's see. The Y was under the cap of Queen Anne's County. I just think it, it's awesome. It really is. Long time coming. I hope that the citizens use it and our schools use it, and, you know, it checks off those boxes. Last meeting, I wasn't here. I was in Minnesota with the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, looking how Minnesota does things. It's the, you know, every year, the BMC goes to a different city to meet with their leaders and see how they tackle their problems. And Minnesota is an interesting, Minneapolis, Minnesota, I should say, St. Paul, is an interesting city. They have, I want to pronounce it right, Huns, you know, they came from Laos and Vietnam, a huge portion of the population, and then they've got the Somalis, which is a huge portion of the population. Then they got Hispanics, and they got African Americans, and now they're taking in some of the Muslims, so it works for them, you know? They said, one of the things that they do when their population starts to dip, they look at where the conflict is in the world, and they say, come on to Minnesota. I don't know how, you know, but it works. And, you know, it was an interesting trip, to say the least. So, you know, that's all I got on that. I think that, Todd, what I'd like to see is if on our next Commissioners' meeting or the one after, if we can get an update from planning and zoning, like to talk about where we sit on some of our projects, you know, the online service, and turn around time for permits, and, you know, general, how's it going, and what are we doing to make it better?
Ms. Moran, she's scheduled to commit in December, if that's okay.
This meeting?[1622.83]